Okay, good evening, everybody. It's six o'clock. Ed, I'd like to call our town board meeting to order. It is August 24th, 2022. This is our regular...
How about October?
Did I say October?
You said early.
Thank you, Ed. It's October 24th. It's our regular town board meeting. Would everybody please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our... I would like a motion for the approval of prior minutes for our June 13th, June 27th, September 26th, October 11th, regular meeting minutes and special meeting minutes of October 11th, 2022. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Are there any questions or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Tonight is our public hearing for our 2023 town and run big budget. It is open, and we're here to take comments if anybody would like to comment on the budget. Bob, did you have any questions?
No.
Any comments? Thank you for... Hope you're happy with our funding of your budget. More happy for all of us.
Yes, thank you very much. We did four and a half miles of road last year. We're gonna do four and a half miles this coming year.
Thank you. Roads look great.
More than Cornell, we should do four miles a week on target.
Any comments? Budget public hearing, calling for comments, questions?
Motion.
Hearing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for our 2023 town board budget.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Shelley, do your thing. Shelley, our... My bookkeeper is going to register our tax cap, which I'm happy to say it... Were about $228,000 under the tax cap. Tax cap was a 2% increase. We were under and have delivered budget with about $700,000 of capital improvements and reduced the tax rate by about 16%, 17%.
Good job.
Okay, well, wait for that. I have a couple of announcements. We will be having a special town board meeting to discuss, to workshop, the workforce housing application from Carney Realty on Tuesday, November 29th. This is a special town board meeting just for the purpose of hearing the history of workforce housing from our workforce housing committee and to hear what the plan is all about from Carney Construction. We've been working on this for six years, and we want to take the opportunity to get the information out to the public one more time at least. I want to remind everybody that all dogs Harvard and Rhinebeck must be licensed by the town clerk yearly, so please get your dog license. Also, if you need a building permit, you have to obtain one for most things you do in the house. If you're not sure, call the building department, speak to Kimberly, and ask if you need a building permit. Also, early voting will be taking place here in Town Hall from the 29th of October through the 6th of November, and then again on Election Day. Please check the Board of Election website sometimes. There's nine days before Election Day. It's also on our website. Anybody else have any announcements or questions? Anil, I saw your hand up.
Oh, yes. I didn't... I thought you were pulling bar questions. I do have questions on the workforce housing meeting.
Sure.
Last... At the last meeting, Kent Carney asked you for the zoning overlays so we could make his application. The deadline for that tax credit application is December. I wondered, have you... And I... My question, first question is, at the general popular meeting, will there be a vote taken on whether...
No vote. We are not laying down the zoning until we do at least one more informational meeting because we've seen that even though we've been working on this for six years, people don't know about it.
Right.
So we want to make sure that people know about it. And then we will decide how we're moving ahead. Most likely, we will not be taking comments. This is a workshop for the town board to inform the public. We may take questions. We'll see how it goes.
So you're speaking, just as I understand, you're speaking of another meeting in addition to the one coming November?
We have called a special town board meeting for November 29th, which is a Tuesday, I believe.
Yeah.
It is... The only thing that will be discussed at this meeting is the workforce housing. We will have a presentation from our workforce housing committee and a presentation from the developer. We expect the presentation to encompass the history of everything the workforce housing committee worked on for the past 12 years.
Is the process moving forward?
How we ended up here, what the plan is, and what the process is moving forward.
And then there will be an additional meeting?
Probably one or two or three. And we still have to lay down our zoning, and we have to accept the application. We have not done that yet, and I don't know when we will do that. The first step is this special meeting.
And there will be at least one more after November 29th.
That's easy. Right? Am I correct in understanding?
That's what we said last time.
Sure.
And am I correct in understanding that since the planning board...
Hold on one second. I don't think there'll be a second presentation from Kent Carney.
No, 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 no.
Yes. No, this is... This is a full presentation for the public.
Okay.
Go ahead, Anil.
And then, since the zoning board or the planning board decided not in favor of the project, yet the town board is able to make the zoning change, will there be a town... Will you poll the town to see whether the town actually approves the zoning change?
It's the town board's decision.
That's correct. Okay, I understand that part.
We take comments, we listen, and we will be responding to the planning board's response to our application.
Okay. And then, does... Kent Carney have... Then he has the overlays just as a description of what his plan is. Should it be approved? Is that correct?
Correct. This is an informational meeting for everybody.
Then the last question I would ask is, in opposing this site... I've walked the site four times since we spoke. And in opposing the site, it's not... You can't fight... It's not right to fight something with nothing, but to provide what you and we have not been able to find, which is a workforce housing site for Rhinebeck that serves us better. And so one question I would open to you is, can you suggest... I mean, I've been parsing the planning boards.
I'm gonna interrupt you, and then I'm gonna continue with the meeting.
Yeah, sure.
This is an issue of private property. The town does not own property.
At point, exactly.
You can go out and talk to somebody. This is a piece of property where the developer willing to do this. No one else has come forward.
No. Yes.
No one else has come forward. If I had 20 acres and the wherewithal, I would do it. I'm gonna continue with the meeting. We'll take questions after. We have a presentation here from... I'd ask Carrie to come, but we don't really need Carrie, so she's not coming. But we do have Michael DeCola here to do Carrie's or Rec Director a brief presentation on the Thompson Nazarella Park. Hi, what's your name? Anil Reddy, Michael DeCola, the Chair of our park committee.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So there's a lot of exciting stuff going on in the park right now. I don't know how many people live down the visit, but the sports field construction is well underway. The curves that define the edge of the artificial turf.
Drive down there every day.
I know. I was there over the weekend.
Can you hear me?
I think it's a...
Just recording this. There you go.
The curves that define the edge, it's one of the big construction items are going in. We're hoping and talking with Clark that all of the infrastructure, hard construction, will be done before the first real snow flies. And if weather holds off, I'm guessing we'll try and do the carpet before the new year, but probably they'll come back sometime in the very early spring and finish out the job completely.
I thought they were finishing it by mid-December.
Hopefully, if the weather cooperates.
It's weather dependent.
It's weather dependent at this time.
Why? Because it's outside?
It's the temperature. So for some of us, this has been a decade-long lift, and it's really exciting to see earth being moved and things going in. And we're already making plans for playing spring season on field. So that's sort of the biggest, in terms of impact, thing going on in the park. We've had several meetings talking about other things that we're looking at developing. We are working on a plan for a phased development of the skate park, which is in the master plan. And we should have some of that information for the town board to look at.
We discussed it at our last meeting.
Yeah.
We approved the $9,000 for a phased overview.
For a design plan. So that's super exciting because that's another thing that's been in the works for several years. And there's a group of people who are really excited about the skating, and it's in the park's master plan. So that's yet another aspect that we're looking at getting built in the near future. Chauncey has been leading a pickleball charge to expand pickleball at the park and put in some more courts there. So that's on the near horizon, too, I'm hoping.
It's funded in his budget.
Terrific.
Three pickleball courts adjacent to the tennis courts on the far west side of the old defunct ice rink.
Right, so between the tennis courts and the baseball field.
Yes.
And with the pickleball lining on the tennis courts to be removed when we have built the...
We will have four tennis courts, three pickleball.
There'll be no mixing of pickleball and tennis.
No.
If I may inject a little bit of humor, I had a call, I think it was yesterday, from somebody who is an avid pickleball player and actually a professional pickleball player, who shall not be named. And she happened to be down to the park for some reason. I don't know why she was there. And she saw what's going on in the site you were just describing.
For the artificial turf field.
She called me to find out.
Yeah, there's about 20 pickleball courts. Another exciting thing for me in the park, although my kids have now passed this point, is we're forming a subcommittee to serve, look at, ask questions, make recommendations for the playground areas specifically, which is being formed as we speak. We'll give you a list of the five or six committee members sometime in the next couple of weeks. And that'll move forward as a way for parents of younger children to have a place where they can have that discussion about what's going on there, what needs they see. So it's an important piece for the park committee to get those stakeholders involved in talking about the park. So I'm excited.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think that's pretty much everything that we've got on the... Oh, a bunch of pollinator plantings went in this year. We're hoping to look for areas where we can expand that.
By the tennis courts?
They're behind, in that strip between the tennis courts and where the pickleball.
I noticed they just got cut down.
There was some indiscriminate mowing, but they're coming back.
Yeah, they're prannies. They'll be fine.
Yeah, they'll be fine. Yeah, we had a little bit of a mowing miscommunication. But the larger...
I go down every day, so.
The larger plants are in, and we're looking for areas... Hopefully, in this early spring, we can identify some areas as the sports field is finished, and there's a lot of disturbed earth there where we can find some more border areas that would make good pollinator plantings. And that's pretty much where we're at right now.
Terrific. I also want to say that this budget is funding the total resurfacing of the big pool, and we know that the kid pool has to be done.
Right.
We have plowed a lot of money into the pool area in 2023.
Thank you guys so much for all the attention that you've been showing the park recently in the last few years. It has made a huge difference down there. And as these new infrastructure pieces open up, we're gonna see a kind of use of the park that I don't think the town sees.
No, the pavilion will be ready. We have to get the snack bar online. And then, I mean, to my eye, I don't know what else we're going to do because a lot of the park is under conservation easement and will remain wild and natural. How many acres down there? 100 and...
It's almost 80% of the park that has...
Yeah, but how many total acres? So just realize that this park was bought for Rhinebeck and was meant to be passive and active recreation. Active recreation like the artificial turf, multi-use playing field, the pickleball courts, tennis, the pool, the camp, and...
And volleyball.
Well, volleyball might go, but we'll see. Yeah. But then passive recreation like pollinator gardens, walking trails, and open space. Those fields will be preserved forever.
And the community garden.
The community garden.
Which is a really important part of the park as well. It has expanded in the last year. Yeah, I'm always impressed when I go there, down there, how many people are actually walking. I sort of pooh-poohed walking trails when the planning phase was going 10 years ago. I visibly think that that was necessarily something that was gonna be of a lot of use, and it gets an enormous amount of use. And I think it's an important asset of the community, so I'm excited to see it.
Thank you for your tireless...
What about tireless?
You're beating me up a lot, so it must be exhausting. Does anybody have questions for Michael? Michael's the Chair of our park committee. Eleanor?
Yeah, I was just wondering if at some point before all of this goes in, we could have somebody come in and look at the overall design and the park because I've mentioned this before in the meeting, but I don't know if you were there. I went back north where I used to live, and it's a very small rural poor community, Boondle, New York, if you ever heard of it. And I went to their park, and it was just very enticing and beautiful and really interesting. You know, you really wanted to go there and have a picnic. While we were there, some kids got off the school bus, and some were playing tennis, other kids were going chameleon. It just was integrated somehow. It was really beautiful to look at instead of like...
You don't think ours is pretty?
No.
I'm sorry. But we did a master plan. It was done, so.
No, there's a pretty detailed master plan. What you're seeing...
I know that, but I'm saying...
What you're seeing right now is a... What's really been a decade-long development of the park from what was just the playground area and pool into a much...
Yeah, I don't want to spend a lot... I'm just telling you, go up to Boondle and go to their parking.
We're gonna concentrate on Rhinebeck.
I'm just saying that it's a place... I'm just saying it's, you know, it doesn't hurt to look at other places and see what they've done.
I'll be excited to hear your feelings about the park when the construction on the field is done and the trails are reestablished. And we're not in a construction mode anymore. It's not particularly pretty right now, but it will be.
Erwin Park? Erwin Park?
Anybody else?
Just, I... Where is the skate park gonna be? If the pickleball courts are gonna be on the town?
They're right in back of the pavilion, so just...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Behind the, sort of behind the baseball, on the far side of the baseball, back past the pavilion.
Beyond the outfield fence.
Yeah, beyond the outfield fence down there.
Yes.
It's a field now.
Yeah, I know. Where those trees are behind the scoreboard.
Yeah, the trees probably will stay.
It's between... There's a field between the edge of the outfield fence and the tree line, and that's the area that's been designated.
That's good. And it's gonna be some... It's gonna be below brain, is that right?
We don't have a plan yet.
We don't have a plan yet. We're working... It will have some mix of up and down. The best ones do, and... But we're working with a company that designs these things and can stage it so that we get something in quickly, and then we have a future build-out as there's more interest in development and maybe some fundraising that happens in the community to make this happen. Yeah, any other?
What are you gonna plant north of the soccer field?
So that in the... I would encourage all of you to look at the comprehensive plan for the park. I believe it's available on the town's website.
I'll look at it.
It is?
I'm looking at it.
If there's a link to the Thompson Nazarella Park...
If not, Joan will get it up tomorrow.
I think it's up there. I've gotten to it that way before. It may have gotten buried somewhere, but it's pretty detailed because it had to go through an enormous amount of review and planning. And I, you know, having participated in that almost a decade ago, to see any of it starting to get built is amazing. And it is a vision that I think once the key cornerstone pieces of it are in place, will feel great.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Right, as I said, Carrie won't be coming. Shelley, are we good?
All five of them.
Great, how about that? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022-230, adopting our 2023 town budget. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I think by voice, Ed Roberts.
Aye.
Chauncey Walter.
Aye.
Josh Culver.
Aye.
Alan is absent post-surgery, and I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you all very much. It was... Thank you, Shelley. Always stressful developing a budget, and I think we've delivered a good one with a lot of good infrastructure money and capital projects and taxes.
And I'll just say, you really have no idea how hard Elizabeth works on this every year. It's exhaustive and intensive, and I don't know how she does it. She did, and does, and will again.
You can go now, Bob. I know you.
Stay.
Oh, who's better than you? You're the best highway superintendent in the whole town of Rhinebeck. Just because you're the only one.
I'm the only one.
Okay. I need a motion for Resolution 2022-229, our zoning administrator job description.
So move.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. As you know, we've been without a full-time zoning administrator for about a year. We've had an acting zoning administrator, and we need to desperately hire someone. This is the job description for a part-time, 20-hour-a-week zoning administrator. We want to put it out there, see who applies. And I have to tell you, the biggest thing we're seeing is there is very little available labor with experience. We're seeing labor shortages of all sorts. So we may have to offer more money to get somebody qualified, and it's an important position. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of adopting the zoning administration job description and allowing us to publish it and start searching for the position? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thanks. Passes unanimously. I need a motion for Resolution 2022-231, approving the service contract for American Heating and Cooling.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Josh. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, there are a batch of options, and I think it's the last page of your patch.
Filters?
Well, there are high-efficiency pleated Merg-8 filters and so forth and so on. I'm sorry.
I can't speak from exact certainty, but I don't believe we can fit any of those filters in these units. And those are all related to higher efficiency filtration. It's become very commonplace during the pandemic. But if you're thicker...
We're only doing the cost of the inspection as here.
Understood. Let me speak to you guys.
Yeah. And it's with none of the...
And the fans.
And the fans. It's none of the other bells and whistles.
Fine. I just... I was gonna say, go ahead and do whatever you need to, but that's fine, too.
Can't fit this filter.
Okay, got it.
Thanks, Josh. Thanks, Chauncey. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of servicing these buggers?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need... I'll do a motion for Resolution 2022-232, our preliminary accounts payable abstracts. We have 48 checks totaling $74,438.97. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Opposed, it passes unanimously. I will also make a motion for Resolution 2022-233 for our capital projects abstracts. Five checks totaling $9,677.50. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Josh. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I will make the last motion for Resolution 2022-234 for our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Okay.
For the public, the reason why I motion this is because I am the chief financial officer, and this is my work, and I wanted to go on record that I'm supporting it and moving it forward. Any questions or comments on the budget transfers or amendments? We should have a couple more to clean up the balances towards the end of the year. Sometimes, we generally have the money. We don't always put it exactly where we need it to be, so we have to move it around a little bit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So move unanimously. Any new business before the board? We have two discussion items, our electronic use policy and our internet use policy. We publish them both here. I'd like to ask you all in the next couple of weeks to go over them. With your approval, I will also send them to our consultant, Michael Richardson, who helps us on policy and labor, to get his input. I have sent him our procurement policy and asked him to have a look at that, too. This is thanks to our clerk for making sure that we're compliant with the Office of the State Controller and examining and updating our policies as needed. So, you know, the electronic use system was first adopted in 2009, and the internet policy in '02.
Did anything change?
Might a little bit. Might have changed. There's no more dial-up, I don't think, so... Joan, I'm gonna ask you to refer this to Michael Richardson.
Sure.
Is there any public comment on any non-agenda items?
I don't know if you call this non-agenda, but is the 11/29 meeting going to be videoed since it's not an official?
Well, we hope so, but we don't have control over whether or not a camera person shows up. We had a no-show last week or the week before.
The other question I have is, do we have data or will they be presenting data of what rentals cost in the village and in the town? Because I was looking at these, and I think they're kind of high, but...
Well, they're based...
I was looking at this work.
Yes, those aren't based on what current rentals are. They are based on the current... On a percentage of the current median or average county income.
No, I get that, but I'm just saying that they...
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, I'm just... Okay. I mean, in five years, they might look like the cost for rentals, but I'm just saying right now, I'm paying less than what's on here, so.
Yes, I don't believe they're going... This is a state and federally subsidized funded program, and they are required to rent them at a percentage of the county median or average income, and that's what it is. That's not within our control. But I mean, I don't know where you can get a three-bedroom apartment now for $2,500.
Well, I'm looking at the one because I got a one-bedroom one now. I have no idea.
I mean, anecdotally, I just saw a one-bedroom for rent today for $1,900 on East Market Street.
On East Market?
Sure.
Looking for advice on any parts within published studies on transportation planning for the town? Because I looked within the plan, and it didn't inspire much.
Which plan, Anil? Workforce housing or the town?
The town plan.
We have a citizens' review committee right now that's been charged with looking at our comprehensive plan, and some of it has to do with transportation and... at our comprehensive plan, and some of it has to do with transportation and rural roads. Public transportation, we have found, is something that, aside from our senior van, is beyond our funding.
That may be a different, that may be, that may be changing in the next 10 years. Like the vehicles, we'll change that.
Maybe there will be. We neither have the staffing nor the funding to run a townwide, you know, and it's something that's talked about all the time in the county.
In, in 10 years, there could be, conceivably be an autonomous electric bus called for by a phone.
Wouldn't that be great?
Well, where else but here? I mean, that's, this is, this is the nucleus of a country that's crazy and falling apart. Don't go crazy, just, but that's not far from it. We have wonderful, every phase, books are at the book sale. That's a big damn deal. I'm just saying, there is everything here, and it's a treasure, and we, if not here, where else?
We try our best, we can't solve everything. We know that there's.
That's why we're here.
Yeah. We know there's transportationally challenged. We know that we neither have an office of transportation, nor the labor, nor the funding to offer a townwide. We would love to.
Well, we can all create something.
Apropos of that, we've been asking for volunteers for about four months to drive our senior van, and I think we've only had two people come forward. Ed did a, a, this weekend, did you get any volunteers?
I will.
Right, so, I mean, we can't get our senior van up and going because we don't have drivers for that, so we're trying our best.
Separate, separate part to that question is, besides in the comprehensive plan, is there anywhere else we're thinking or writing has been done about the growth path and development path for the village? Because that's what, that's what we're talking about.
The village is a different municipality.
I'm, I'm sorry, I meant.
Well, the comprehensive plan is, is the roadmap for development.
Yeah.
Or?
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's why I've been asking, looking for.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions from the public? Passed our budget volume one, Karen, I know. We passed our budget already. I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session, Bill, to discuss the appointments of specific persons to various committees and statutory boards in anticipation of our general rework today.
You're suspecting out today, making an AP's appointment?